All right, I'd like to call the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board of Trustees meeting to order. It is Monday, November 20th, hard to believe. We are holding this as a hybrid meeting, meaning that we are in the village hall as well as on Zoom. There is a Zoom link at the top of the agenda, also a call and number for those that choose to do that as well. We have a quorum, the agenda was properly posted, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. With that, I'm going to mix this up right away. And the board members know this, we're going to switch to item, new business item 8A. This is a notification of the proclamation for firefighter Gavin Wenderick's Day to be held on April 5th, 2024. Gavin, we recently lost Gavin from our firefighting force in our community. He graduated from Minot Grove High back a few years ago, progressed with his career starting as a welder, then heavy machine equipment operator, finally a grain hauler, and then with that he had his commercial driver's license, which is quite a feat. Involved a number of sports, but he loved baseball most. He was in the Boy Scouts Troop 132, a rise to the rank of star, participated in the Mad City Ski Team, dedicated his family and friends and the community, always had a great smile, and I remember that when I coached him in soccer many years ago. Followed in his father's footsteps and joined the firefighting, our local firefighting department in April of 2022. We will miss Gavin, and we will honor him on April 5th next year. With that, we'll slide back on the agenda and...
Do you have a motion to approve the proclamation?
Oh, yes, sorry. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation for firefighter Gavin Wenderick's Day.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion second then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right, now that I mixed up the agenda, we're going to keep going on, starting off with public appearances. This is public opportunity to speak on any subject. With that, anybody in the room or on Zoom who would like to speak, please hold your comments to no more than three minutes, provide your name, your address, municipality. So I'll pause and see if anybody in the room or on Zoom would like to speak. All right, with that then, move to item five, discuss and consider our meeting minutes held from November 6th regarding, and our budget workshop held on the 13th. Any questions, comments, edits in regards to the meeting minutes as presented?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular village board meeting on November 6th, 2023, and the budget workshop on November 13th, 2023, as written.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
We have motion and second then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. I was too quick for you, chief, and I already, we already went through the proclamation. Sorry. With that then, we'll move to presentations from the board, or to the board. First up is the League of Municipalities.
I want to thank you all for allowing us to be here. My name is Ryan Burns. I represent the League of Wisconsin's Mutual Insurance Program along with my colleague here, Mike Zagrodnik. I've handed out some packets and you'll see there's quite a bit of information. I've been told we have 10 minutes to talk about insurance, and I commend you to agreeing to listen to insurance. It takes a lot to commit to that, I understand. But, one, it's very nice and I enjoy these opportunities because as a board, you may not even have known who your insurance carrier was, and I assume too much, so if you did, I apologize. But a lot of times, this is a refresher to understand what a very strong insurance program that you currently are with. My background is a former municipal employee, former law enforcement, I think about how I would have wanted to be protected and, you know, the legal, the people, how this program was developed. I couldn't think of a better place I would choose to be. I wasn't a law enforcement officer in this state, but this is something that we're very proud of, and I wanted to give you guys as much information as possible because I think this is a very big decision. You may or may not realize this, but you've been with the league program for 23 years. A very good, healthy relationship. Mike's been your agent for 23 years, been four or five with myself, and I'll let him talk a little bit more as we move along, but I thought, one, you have to listen to insurance tonight, but how do we cut to the chase? And if I was sitting in your shoes, what would I really want to hear? So you'll see a proposal that looks familiar, if you can see where it says, the Village of Cottage Grove on the front, and you can really, there's a great deal of information here. You know, hopefully we'll have an opportunity to answer any questions you might have, but if you just move along to page five, you'll see what some of the core coverages that you carry as a municipality, as a public entity. This is going to be your general liability, your police liability, your public officials' liability, workers' comp, property. This is sort of a summary that breaks down what and how you're covered. The one item you'll take a look is that we carry a $3 million liability limit, and that is a per occurrence limit with no aggregate. That is unique to us, meaning you can have as many $3 million claims as you would like. Now, it's difficult to get there with the statutory protections we have in this state, but we're seeing more and more, you know, items work their way into federal court. You know, there are some very significant coverages that you will be walking away from if you take a look at the program that you're going to tonight, which I have a great deal of respect, but there are some court differences, and I think it's been a great relationship with Cottage Grove because of your size and the way that our program has been structured. If the League of Wisconsin sounds familiar to you folks, you'll know that that is your association that you pay dues to. You're a member of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. We're the mutual insurance program, we are connected at the hip, our CEO shares an office with the director, Jerry Duchesne, and they are very supportive of this program for a reason. And if you look on the left-hand side of your packet, I also share a list of the participants within this program. Not to be self-serving, but I've been involved in this program for five years, but over the last 25 years, you can see we've grown to over 500-plus members, almost 76% of the municipalities in the state are with this program for a reason, and I think it's because of, you know, our board, the decisions that are made within this program are your peers, administrators, mayors, clerks. So I think you'll find that as we've moved along with this program and continued to strengthen, it's been due to that, the people behind the scenes. Now, talking about just the coverages here, I think, let's go ahead and move along to page eight, and if I was in your shoes, it'd be like, let's just go ahead and get right to it. We've talked about coverage, we're going to talk about price. So this is sort of a breakdown, and this is a renewal premium here for you. You know, you'll see some of those coverages that I talked about, and you'll kind of see, you know, the financial strength of this company is, you know, we don't have peaks and valleys. This has been a very steady program because it really is almost, if anybody's heard of the term of a captive program, you know, a lot of our rating is bubbled by how well it's performed with its participants, and we've done well, I think, as I mentioned, some of the other items, the people behind the scenes, but through some of the folks that actually handle claims. I mean, insurance is insurance, we all have to pay it, and I don't think we like it. I don't like paying my own insurance premium, but the more frustrating part is, when the rubber meets the road, how is this going to actually trigger and react and protect you? Now, I will say historically Cottage Grove has done a very good job. You haven't had a lot of claims in this community, so I commend you for that. I think there's a great safety culture here. Your experience mod and workers' compensation is one of the best we have in the program. You have maxed out on your dividend, over $150,000 has been returned to you, and we do declare, and that's the health of the program, but you earned that, and that's significant. You've been .73, .75 for the last six years working with us as your partner who administers your claims. So I think that's just a great starting point. Once anybody sits down and talks insurance with me, I think coverage and price is where you have to start. But what I do need to do, and you'll see, there's a bunch of information, and you'll be able to, all the extra things that we do that I would love to have time to talk about, but I want to be respectful of your time, is move over to, sorry, the PowerPoint, I want to talk about some of these significant differences. So now we've talked coverage and price. And so I gave you a hard copy of the PowerPoint for a reason, and I also gave you a pen because I think, like I said, if you're going to listen to insurance, you should get something. So the pen, please, if you could move through where it says, what is different? I think that's three or four pages in. So being familiar with what you're going to look at as an alternative, you know, these coverages that you see here, unless something drastically changed as of recent, you will not have coverage for, and you will not have defense for. And I would star, highlight, circle this page because these are the questions that I would be asking, and, you know, over the last four or five years with the new team that you've had here, the people that I've interacted with over the last five years, I've come in to meet with to talk about the program, and now it sounds to me like you have a fantastic team, and we would love to continue that relationship with this team that you have. But I look at this, and I know you have growth, I know we have substantial commercial property being developed. Land use is the most expensive claims we've paid in our league program. We have a reserve right now for a $4.5 million land use claim. That's coverage that you'd be walking away from, not from a defense standpoint, but in addition to that, an indemnity standpoint. Those are significant. I think things are changing in our world, we're seeing this as an uptick. We average about 15 land use claims a year within our league program, totaling over a half a million dollars. So it's significant, it's something we're paying attention to, and we have experts that are willing to address this and defend you. Zoning permitting are also things that we see commonly. Tax assessment claims, this is, some of you may be aware of the big box theory, but I haven't seen this go away. The larger commercial outfits, I don't want to name them, you can imagine who they are, are continuing to use their retained attorneys to sue annually for that. You'd be walking away from defense costs as well there. Water, sewer, electric, utility, there was a coverage that you also have been purchasing for your residents, which is a no-fault sewer backup, which is unique to us, and it's just as it sounds. We essentially will provide $100,000 per occurrence, $300,000 aggregate for a sewer backup, no fault, we will pay that. And you have been, you have been paying for that, there is a cost to that, and I think, you know, about 80% of the communities that Mike and I work with, which is about 130 cities and villages, purchase that. So that is something that would also be no longer there. But also, you know, you may realize that if there's a backup in a water main, statutory protection is unless there's negligence on the part of the municipality, you don't owe anything, and that's why it's such an important coverage. But negligence does happen, once it's proven, the program that you're going to look at, to the best of my knowledge, does not provide any indemnity even if negligence is determined. And I apologize, I don't ever go into a situation where I like to talk about what we do well, but I also feel an obligation that I think you'll hear some things that you should ask some questions. I would want my incumbent agent to at least do that for me. Non-monetary claims, defense costs, and claim handling, and this is the big one also, I would circle this, which is deductible versus an SIR. You currently have no liability deductibles. What I know is that I think the lowest deductible that's offered in this alternative program is $17,500, I think I've heard. That is a real liability deductible, so you need to administer your claims. Now, I would say unless, if you have just run-of-the-mill liability claims, that could potentially be manageable. I also am a former fraud investigator and a claims handler, that's kind of how I started in insurance. Handling a complex claim can get very expensive, and you would have to manage that up to retention, and that's what they will be offering you. Right now, it's zero, dollar one, we handle claims. And I think, and why I do what I do, is I represent the League of Wisconsin, I'm not employed by them, I'm an independent agent, and I take pride in that because I work for the Village of Cottage Grove. If I see something that I think looks out of sorts, or I need to go to bat for you for a rate standpoint, I'm able to do that, and the league respects that, and that's how they've always wanted to operate. So who you will be having now is company people that actually work for the carrier. I think there's a difference there.
So you're creeping into your just over 10 minutes now, so I have to wrap it up.
Here's some reimbursement, the next two pages I think are important because they affect the bottom line, and then I have to give my mentor an opportunity here, Mike, I apologize. So you do the right button.
Well, again, I've been your agent for 23 years, and as I look at our program and I look at Cottage Grove, I don't see what's changed in terms of why you decided to be with the league in the first place. And you've been with the league a lot longer than 23 years. You've been with the league program as it was developed back in 1980 through a standard insurance carrier. It changed to an owned program. So the management you're looking at here is going to be your peers, other villages, village presidents and so forth. Their agenda is the same as yours every day when they get up and they operate this insurance program. It's well-capitalized. I think the biggest risk you run when I look at a project like the Amazon Distribution Center coming into Cottage Grove area, these are opportunities for land use claims, and more and more developers are willing to sue, as are residents, if they don't like what's happening with the project. So sometimes it's not a matter of price, sometimes it's more a matter of coverage, and a large $2 million, $3 million land use claim. If anything, maybe you should be looking at increasing your limits with us by another million as a suggestion. But you can buy a lot of training, you can buy a lot of things with three or $4 million in an uncovered claim. And so I guess that's the one thought I would most like to leave you with tonight, and again, Ryan is right, we represent the village, we don't work for the company other than by contract being allowed to be a representative for the program. So that doesn't mean we always agree with what they do and that we don't sometimes get into it when things don't look like they're going the right way, so. But we appreciate your time and the opportunity to talk to you tonight. And if you have any questions, you can call Ryan, his phone number's on there, or you can call me.
Okay.
I'm still around. They dragged me out for evenings for some reason.
There you go. Thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
All right, the next presentation won't be until about quarter after seven, so we'll keep moving down our agenda. So with that then, we're going to move to unfinished business, and this is to discuss and consider updates to the personnel manual.
Okay, so over the last few months, staff have been working on updates to the personnel manual. We provided an opportunity for staff to review and provide feedback. The village's labor attorney also reviewed the entire manual, and our IT managed service provider took a look at the use of technology and electronic communications policy. Through the process, we've had four goals in mind, and those are outlined in the memo, which were to align with best practices and current laws, enhance recruitment and retention efforts, create systems for human resources that are efficient and transparent, and tie into the core values established by the village board. The more impactful changes, especially the financial ones, those are outlined in the memo, but I'm happy to answer any questions on any of the changes that are proposed.
Any questions from board members? I think it's just nice to see a manual in place, actually, or being put in place.
Inga, I had a question about the business travel expenses. You're saying the suggested amount for this stipend is $50 per day. Can you, I guess, can you give me a little bit more context? Because I read the memo, but I'm just trying to get, when I hear stipend, that might not necessarily mean what...
Yeah, I think I'm going to tap in Cameron on that because that was something that he was looking to implement into the handbook as a stipend rather than collecting receipts and everything, so.
Yep. So the methodology is kind of from an administrative perspective, how can we simplify the current policy? I'll be completely honest, there's not a ton of business travel or business expense. What the stipend in lieu of submitting actual receipt will do will kind of make that submission process easier, not that the employee won't be required to have those receipts personally to ensure that they actually incurred the expenses that they're getting reimbursed for from IRS standpoint, but reducing the burden on the employer's side. How we came up with that dollar amount, it is kind of slightly lower than the three kind of aggregate premium, or the three aggregate of the breakfast, lunch, and dinner, knowing that if an employee chose not to eat, you know, breakfast, lunch, or dinner, the combination of the three, they could roll for that to a bigger one meal purchase, just to provide that flexibility as well. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, it just, dollar amount seems a little low, like you said, like eating out isn't cheap, and, I mean, I know JJ and Matt go to conferences every now and again, and I'm just thinking, it's like, it's technically typically in-state, you typically don't get on an airplane, but still, even if you're in Oshkosh, $50 a day doesn't stretch too far.
I think it does too, and I appreciate where this is going. This does highlight kind of like the employer's fiduciary responsibility to make sure when we are traveling, we are minimizing the cost to the village, understanding that it is coming from levy funds. Sometimes conferences and other things will also provide like lunch, so that might be an expense that doesn't need to be covered. But again, just a way to hopefully try to make things simplified. As Inga will probably explain a little bit further, we are hoping to do more routine updates. There are some recommended kind of dates when certain portions of the policies would be, come back to. We would certainly look at data during the period of the collections, like, oh, you know, where are we really far off compared to where we should have been on some of these, and then make those adjustments going forward. So I think at a minimum, it's two years, or maximum, it's two years for the next review?
Every three years, we'll be looking at each section. So sections one and two, we'll actually review next year just so we can get onto that cycle, and then three we'll review in two years, and then the third section we'll review in three years, unless big things come up that we need to review those sooner.
Cameron and I just...
Cameron, I think, explained it well, that there's, at least most conferences have maybe breakfast and/or lunch covered for at least a couple of the days of the conference, and as you mentioned, that would allow for, you know, it still might not cover all of a dinner, especially depending on where the location of the conference is, but this would be kind of the baseline stipend. I suppose we could always consider above and beyond with receipts for extenuating circumstances if there was, you know, a particular conference in a high-cost-of-living area. But generally speaking, and we let this, you know, it rolls over, so if there's three days, you have $150 to work with, and likely, you know, with multiple meals covered during the conference as part of the fee to attend the conference, you know, we hope that in general would be covered, and if we find out it's not, we can, you know, bump this up a bit over time, but we'll see how this goes.
I just know that parking in Chicago is not cheap, and so like, I don't, I like Matt's idea that, you know, if, I don't, I would hate for staff to miss out on an opportunity because of this, this particular stipulation, right? Like, hey, I'd really like to go to a conference in Chicago, but parking is $42 a day, that's going to cut into my eating, like, and then, so I'm just not going to go, right? Like, I just think that's, I think that's unnecessarily unfair, so I just, I think, granted, we're a small municipality, right? Like, I feel like if I really wanted to go, I could message, you know, any one of the department heads and say, hey, I think this is a good opportunity, and I think the village would really benefit from it. Can I go knowing that parking is $48 a day, where you park downtown? So I think that's, I'd like to see that change. So ordinarily, a suggested amount of $50 a day, or we can do receipts if it extends, I don't know how you want to word it, but just something along those lines.
I think the main crux of it was 50 was for, more on the food side of things, we would, especially in extenuating circumstance, take a separate look at parking with receipts for that, above and beyond the 50.
You should look in the manual changes then, because parking says it's included in the 50, and I think that's where David's probably...
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
I would just add that on quick search in the federal MNI is $64 for Dane County, but your first and last travel days are 48, so it does kind of even out, because they're expecting only two out of three meals on your travel days. But again, that can change if your plane's delayed or something, you end up out late, but...
And if meals are provided, you don't get the full per diem either, right? If you get 64 bucks a day and you say, I had two meals provided, you might only get $13, right?
Yeah, but I think definitely cost of living places, you know, maybe we should consider that, because I think somebody went to a conference not too long ago out of state?
Cheek.
Maybe?
Cheek did.
Okay, and just, yeah, if we can keep that in mind in certain circumstances, just have like an override in the manual if...
Yeah, and the expectation is that departments will put together their training budgets for the year too. So if they're going to Chicago, like what you're suggesting, and they're noting that it's a $42 fee at that hotel, then let's take that into account, analyze it, and see what's going to work best for that employee.
I think that's great, yeah, to have that flexibility in the manual. I appreciate that, to look at everything if it needs to be carefully looked at, so thank you.
And I'll just note the state is at $50 a day. So, yeah, the state of Wisconsin is, for out-of-state meals, it's less if you're in-state.
Other questions, comments?
Just like to say thank you for preparing all of the, like, I know it takes a lot of work comparing where we are and where we want to go, and how to standardize everything for our employees so they know what's expected, and so I appreciate that very much, and thank you also for gathering feedback from them as well. Thank you.
I just have a quick question, is there much of a fiscal impact? You know, like the longevity income, I'm not sure, how different is that, $40?
Let's throw it back to our finance director.
I know, who of course...
Oh, it's chatting. Oh, I'm sorry.
I realized that as I started talking. Sorry.
So, speaking for Cameron, he has reviewed all of the policies and everything too, and a lot of, like the, I'm sorry, which one were you referring to?
The longevity incentive is an example.
Yep, so that was also a part of the union contract negotiations too, so there's been a lot of... So there's been a lot of discussion over that and an analysis of it too.
Other questions, comments? Otherwise, it's discuss and consider.
Gentlemen, make a motion to approve the updates to the Personnel Manual with a slight change for allowing for more flexibility for the business expense section. Otherwise, move to approve.
I would like to discuss just parking and tolls. That is struck out. I would like to see that not get struck. Because if parking and tolls to Chicago, that's probably seventy bucks. I don't want people to have to pay for, you know, if David, what you're saying is inclusive of that.
Right, I just.
Then fine.
And I'm assuming Inga and Cameron will go back to the woodshed and kind of update it, but they don't necessarily have to come back here.
Agreed.
I guess, just to be very clear, so we're understanding what you guys are saying. When we go back and make revisions, just to be inclusive on any parking and traveling expenses associated, you know, on top of the fifty-dollar stipend.
I was following more what Matt's recommendation was, do the fifty per day. But if there are extenuating circumstances, then you can submit receipts. So I think that fits within the spirit of what Vince is, but I don't want to speak for Vince.
Okay, I think we, based off of what you guys said, we have proper guidance to make those changes.
I will second with changes.
Without any further discussion. Having heard none, all those favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, am I abstaining? Motion carries. Assuming that's our next. All right, I'll make sure, we'll just keep going. All right, next then, we'll move to new business, item B. That's discuss and consider ordinance ten twenty twenty-three, Uniform Address Requirements.
I could just interject, so we got some additional comments back on this ordinance, so we, from some of the chiefs. So we want to make some additional revisions to it and bring it back. So, you know, if you have any thoughts, you can feel free to share it, but we would like to make some initial changes and then bring it back for a review later.
Okay, Rick, do we need a motion to table then?
Just, let's do a motion to postpone till the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to postpone ordinance ten dash twenty twenty-three, Reuniform Address Requirements. And I'll second.
Motion second to postpone. Any further discussion?
Rick, next time, when you bring us back, can you leave the track changes in, so we can see what the changes are?
Yes, and some of the comments were just on like the east, or like the even odd numbering.
Sure.
And the sizing of numbers, so.
It's always nice to be able to see what.
Exactly.
Because I don't know this ordinance, I don't think I've ever read this ordinance, so. It's like, I don't know if it's new or what, so yeah, track changes are super helpful, thank you.
Yep, and like I said, if you have any comments tonight, feel free to share them, and we can make those as well, but.
I guess I have one comment, since I live in an area where there's a lot of new construction, and, you know, that can be an injury risk for someone on a construction site. So maybe it's in, how does it apply to places that are in construction, like under construction?
So this would be prospective, I guess. If it's already under construction, it wouldn't apply, like, the interesting plan wouldn't apply to, or the requirements wouldn't apply to them. But anybody that applies for a permit after the effective date of, like, a construction or development after this effective date of the ordinance, it would apply to them.
Any other discussion? All right, having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I don't think anybody has opposed or abstained, so we'll move right on. Cameron, are guests ready, or?
They are.
Okay, all right, then we'll move back. And this is a presentation from Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance. You guys can come right up here and push the button for one of the microphones and speak loud. You have to push a little button that says, looks like a person's speaking, and then a red light will come on. There you go.
All right, thank you, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present and for considering Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance Company as an option. My name is Steve Stanzik, I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Cities and Villages. Next to me is Ben Rank, who is the Manager of Services, Insurance Services and Products. What I'd like to do, and the ten minutes allotted, is to provide you an overview of our organization and the service model that we have. First off, I presume that staff has done its due diligence on the coverage comparison as well as the financial data, so I'm just going to really speak to the organization, how we're structured. What really makes us different is that we are a service-based organization that provides wholesale coverage, not only on the insurance coverage side, but primarily investing on the training and development for all of our members. We were founded in nineteen eighty-seven. We are comprised of fifty-four members, which represents about twenty-five percent of the population of the state of Wisconsin. We believe the fifty-four members that we have provides for our ability to be a very nimble organization, able to make decisions at the board level, committee level, that we are a member-owned company, and the members have a active voice, no matter what their concerns may be. We are A.M. Best rated at AA Stable, which is the highest level that we can achieve, given our financial size. We are also recognized by AGRIP as a best practices pool. We are only one of twenty percent of all pools that AGRIP represents nationally, which is about five hundred. And you'll hear that throughout the meeting, and that is best practices. This is something that we embrace, and more in particular, that our members embrace, and is part of the whole dynamic of our organization. So when we speak about the uniquely different aspect of our organization, we, because of our staffing, which I'll get to in a bit, we are structured in such a way that we form a strategic partnership with all of our members. Now, the average size is about twenty-five thousand in population. We're as large as Green Bay and Kenosha, we're as small as Wisconsin Dills, Reedsburg, Lodi. And the cross-section of members, roughly about the size of the Village Cottage Grove, is one that is part of the service team that we provide on the dedicated side. We recognize that not all of our members are blessed to have large staff. We also recognize that there, along with Cottage Grove, is a lot of development within our members, which puts strain on your staff. That's where, when we come in with our dedicated teams, to provide a support system for yourselves, not only on the insurance side, but also on the training and development side. In particular, we are not commission-based. We, as mentioned, are a service-based company. We have approximately thirty-three employees, and they are split and dedicated among the fifty-four members that we have. We will provide and work for Cottage Grove and your interests. I should note specifically on the second bold point, it's really about governance and how we're set up. From a governance standpoint, we have a Board of Directors of seven members, comprised of two small, two medium, two large, and one at-large. We also have a finance committee. Roughly between the two groups, they represent about twenty-eight percent of our entire membership. What that means is they all have an active voice in the type of benefit and coverage that members receive. I would reflect that our organization is extraordinarily transparent with our members, that each one knows what their staffing looks like, what the service levels look like, what the training needs are, what our financial position is, and they're in the best, most informed position to be able to make decisions that benefit them. We are an extension of your staff. We can embed as needed, which means that Cottage Grove has invested with its employees. You've created an HR department. That function itself, we are well-prepared to be able to support, as we have with all of our other members. Our risk and training complement our coverages. I note yet again that we look at risk management as best practices. We look at ways that we can mitigate risk. We use our safety risk management folks to be able to identify any of your claims issues, to be able to identify EPL, that is Employment Practices liability issues, and matters that affect your government and operation. Our goal is to reduce the risk based upon staffing needs, based upon an analysis of your operations, a policy review, onsite evaluations, facility inspections. This is all predicated, because we would rather you not use the coverage. We would rather you not expend unnecessary dollars in risk exposures. We put all that effort on the front end. This is just a pictorial graph of just reflecting that we also have a presence in the Madison area. You'll note that six of your municipalities of which you interact with, I'm sure on a regular basis, are noted, Verona, Fitchburg, Middleton, Manona, Sun Prairie, Stoughton. We utilize, among all of our members, a lot of networking. There's a lot of policy sharing. This only reflects that there is a sense of community among our members, based upon regional areas, based upon like professions, with those sharing of documents and practices. If we have regional training, we will bring that regional training to the Madison area. It'll be there onsite here, or if there's a broader training, it can be done. It's, for example, Fitchburg. We also have training that is conducted on a regular basis in Wauwatosa. We also invest heavily on the virtual training side. So we understand that there is an issue and a focus with Cottage Grove, and that is on the training aspect for your staff. Just as an example on how we will further embed within your community, so safety risk managers, they would come on-site, they would be part of your safety committee. They would review claims and loss runs with yourselves, they would do the facility inspections, they would conduct the trainings for you. We would do the same on the, we call them EPL specialists. Essentially, they're human resource specialists, we employ three of them. They're divided equally among the fifty-four members that comprise Cities and Villages. They would be a resource for yourselves, as we understand that there's been a heavy investment from Cottage Grove on your staff in terms of your future growth and development. So what we've charted out here is essentially how we believe that CIMIC and Cottage Grove are, excuse me, are an ideal fit. Is noted that, of course, this board has invested in HR position. You've invested in HR sophisticated systems. Is noted, we provide HR specialists to be able to support the areas of human resources within your organization. We also provide NeoGov HR software suite. So Cities and Villages provides products and grant dollars that are used for all of the members. Roughly, that translates to about twenty thousand dollars of value back to Cottage Grove. We will review policy development, we will do policy development, sample policies, and a full HR assessment of your current practices. Again, this is part of the service model of the organization. Training plans for village employees, as we also understand that that was a need expressed by the village. Noted here is the robust training programs that we do. We train probably at least ten to fifteen thousand people any calendar year. We emphasize our leadership development tracks, we have three of them. So we're developing your new supervisors or individuals that you believe are in a position to become supervisors as part of your succession planning. We also look at your existing supervisors and leaders with two different types of development tracks to enhance upon their current skills. We also have a program called Training Genius. That essentially is a triage type of analysis that you can conduct on your own, that will evaluate your current needs, given certain policies and procedures, and from that will spit out a training system of pieces that you would need to be able to implement things. Cyber coverage would be an example of the transparency and the nimbleness of our Board of Directors. We've adopted new cyber coverage, I believe that's been included in your documents for consideration. Most recently, that includes an upgrade to our cyber coverages that allows for one million dollars of coverage, as the village has shown that it has an interest in protecting its cyber needs, fifty thousand dollar retention. We provide additional supplemental resources, such as Ontech, which is our partner for all cyber needs. We'll also do onsite IT assessments through them. We also conduct IT roundtables, which we will do for HR, park and rec, protective services, public works. Finally, the enhanced relationship and services, there would be dedicated service teams. As I noted before, that this would be the team that Cottage Grove would be assigned. It includes an EPL or HR specialist, safety risk management specialist, a work comp specialist, liability EPD claims manager, protective services specialist, as we put a lot of focus and emphasis on police and fire services. Ben will be, would be handling all of your insurance needs through the renewal process, through contractual risk transfer issues, and any matters that you don't have the internal resources for. And then Jenny Vickel finally is the person who will be handling from our side to support all of your needs internally, as you need them. So this is a pictorial of essentially your dedicated service team. We don't, this is not about calling one-eight-hundred numbers, this is about live people. Comprised in our organization is over three hundred years of local government experience, either working directly for or with. So we are comprised of people who know government. Myself has spent over thirty years in local government. We understand the challenges and needs, and this is also reflected among our entire staff. Finally, I would also note, so one special aspect of our loss control program is on the protective services side. There are roughly, I believe, shouldn't say roughly, there are exactly forty-six accredited Wiley-Ag agencies in the state of Wisconsin. Cottage Grove is blessed to be one of them. From CivMIC, roughly one-half of all accredited agencies throughout the state are CivMIC members. We don't believe that's an accident. As I said, we embrace best practices, our members embrace best practices. This runs through department by department and starts from beginning to end, whether it's through the city or village administrator, to the police chief, to the fire chief. It is a network comprised of colleagues throughout all of the members within our organization. And the collegiality and assistance that everybody provides to each other is a sense of community. To include the support that we as dedicated staff provide and customer service is our number-one focus, because without the member, there is no organization. And that's the model upon which we move by. Finally, that's the window that I believe I've been given. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to entertain them. Regardless, I would very much like to thank each and every one of you for the opportunity for us to be able to present our story. And we certainly look forward to hopefully serving you in a greater fashion.
Any questions for Board members? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, I wish you the very best of luck.
All right, moving back down to new business. This is item C, discuss and consider block party application approval process. I think Lisa, you had the memo in the packet.
Yeah, so going through and cleaning up some applications with the fee schedule changes for twenty twenty-four, and going across the block party application, there is not currently an ordinance that indicates that it needs to go to the Village Board, however, that has been the past practice. So I guess we're recommending to do what we did with the sound permit and have it be approved by village staff.
Any questions for Lisa, comments? I always love to hear about block parties, but I don't think the board.
Right, I'll make a motion to approve updating the block party application approval process.
All right, we have a motion second then.
Josh?
Yeah?
Sorry, just before voting, just one.
Sorry, just one, before, before voting, just one, one comment. I, and I believe we, we touched on this as staff, that we would try to, try to remember to copy the board to these just so you guys are aware. Not just so you could attend, but just in case. I mean, it's, it's a road closure that I think is good information for the board to be aware of in case they get, you, you guys could, you know, be out and about in the community, get asked about something. Why is the road closed? And at least you would know about it. So we'll, still try to keep you informed. But I, mainly, we just want to make sure that our emergency services and, and public works teams are coordinating.
All right, thanks, Matt. Any other discussion? Having heard none, all those favor then.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next then, discuss and consider Resolution 20, 23-15 to commit funds to the urban non-point service grant, source grant, sorry. You, JJ?
Yes, essentially, I think you've already been made aware that we were given this grant. But since it's not immediately funded in 2024's budget, I need to provide some kind of documentation to DNR to formally accept it. So essentially, we have to pass this resolution stating that in 2025's budget, we will include at least $80,2500 for our portion of this grant to update our stormwater model, stormwater management plan.
Any questions for board members?
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution 2023-15 to commit funds for urban nonprofit source grant, or non-point source grant, sorry.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Motion second then, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right. I think we move right. Why is that that way? Okay. I've been bouncing all around anyway, it doesn't matter tonight, so. We'll move into reports from village boards, commissions, and committees. We'll start with utility commission, which is right above that. So Chris? What?
Yeah. It's not on the website. I don't, that's not on.
It's not on there?
It's not on mine.
Yeah, I'm on the website.
Yeah, I got plan commission first.
Yeah, it just goes straight to plan commission. I don't see on the.
And it's not above that.
Yeah, I don't have utility commission on the public agenda.
Well, that's something weird. This came through the PDF thing. I just printed. Maybe I gotta stop.
I always go to the website. Just because that's, that's what's public.
It was the last one that went to the agenda, so I don't know what happened.
Okay. All right. No, no, that's good to know. So we will, it's not out there, so we'll move right to complaint commission, I think. With that, that's me, so get me on the spot. Again, it's a running theme tonight. So we met on November 8th, and we covered several things, which we have a whole list here on the agenda to discuss and consider. So we'll start touching on a few of those. I'll do a quick high level, and then we've got a few of the folks here, and we'll get over to them that want to share what they're exciting stuff they're working on, and then let Aaron pipe in too as well. So on the 8th, we had a public hearing to discuss a planned unit development for a spot over where they were switching from Highland Village subdivision to a planned unit development. We also then broke that out, following that as a commission, discussed that particular planned unit development. Again, this is for that spot right in Cork Crossing, Sandpiper, that area on BB. And we'll get, they'll, they'll present a few of them. Then we went to site plan application for that same thing, certified survey map again for that same development. And then switched gears to GB real estate investments in a site for East Cottage Grove. Again, covered that. Again, public hearing then for an ordinance update. And this is in line with all the work that was done on the housing task force. It's just a step forward for that. All of which, at the end of the day, the plan commission recommended the village board consider and, for approval. So with that, we do have the first presenters, and this is for New Tech. And all you have to do is push a button.
Yep. Hi. Good evening.
All right. You want to tell us a little bit of project? You know, you've already done the spiel for plan commission, but you've got a slightly different group here.
So I think my architect might be online, Charlie. I'm not sure if he is or not. Probably not.
You might be double muted.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
There he is. I think Charlie can hear.
All right. So take it away, Charlie.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, so obviously, we've already met with the village once, who talked with the village engineer, working with Aaron here to go through rezone the property. We're on the process of vacating the road that's going through there, splitting it from several parcels that are currently there, and then bringing it down to two parcels in the end is our goal. We're aware of the easements. We have already started to work in the feedback, the engineer review that we received already, some realignments from last week or the November 8th meeting. But ultimately, the project is for, you know, we're focusing on New Tech painting right now. That would be a large building to store vehicles and then house the business side of Dave Henziak's company with a separate building for some workshop space and storage of some equipment and such to the north, right along the, the water drainage easement. Reviewing the site plan, we have several different storm pond types. We have bio basin, wet pond, dry pond. The goal is to take all the water from both of the parcels on to Dave's. That'll assist the other parcel in more developmental land. But also, it'll allow Dave to have a wet pond with a fountain feature, which is what we discussed last meeting on why the building is kind of set back a little bit. Looking at the plan, since last meeting, we will be moving that up a little bit per the recommendation, but we still have to fine tune what's on that second lot to figure out how far we can move that up.
All right. With that, we'll let Dave, anything else to say?
No, I think he, he pretty much summed it up. So everybody's had a chance to see the renderings and all the plans, I suppose.
Yeah, and we'll let, we'll turn Aaron loose now to, to give some more guidance, because that way that, if the board does have some questions, Aaron may fill in the question so you don't have to address them.
Thanks.
So Aaron, you.
Yeah, thanks, John. So just to clarify, there are three separate agenda items. The first is the rezoning of the property. It's currently zoned as a planned unit development, which is specific to that former Metcalf project. Since that's not going forward, it's going to have to be rezoned, whatever the next project is. In this case, we'd be recommending zoning it back to planned business, which is what it was prior to the Metcalf project. And it's comparable to the zoning throughout the Cottage Grove Road corridor. So we'd recommend approval of that rezone with no specific conditions attached to that. As far as the site plan, as Charlie pointed out, we're just looking at the New Tech half of this, the western half. That'll be the restaurant commercial building will be coming back. It could be as soon as December, I guess as soon as they did it, did it ready and submitted. So for that eastern half, we would recommend approval with a few conditions. The first one would be looking for some additional buffer yard landscaping along the northern edge where it's adjacent to the residential properties to the north. That's something that's called out in the comprehensive plan as well as in the ordinance. There's a landscaping plan provided. I think we need a little bit more detail in addition to the buffer yard, but just there's an accounting of how many total points are provided in each of the different categories, but not really a breakdown of how the different plants are accomplishing those points. So I think we just need a little bit more detail on that. We'll need the lighting, cut sheets, and lighting plan and photometric for staff review. The fourth condition, just to note that any improvements in the utility easements are at the owner's risk, and that really applied more to the other half where some of the driver for the retail building was, was in the easements. But just general note for, for both halves of the project. On number five, we just want to see Knox boxes for any commercial spaces so our emergency responders can get access in off hours. We'll want the design team to verify that the fire department's equipment turning radii can be accomplished on the site. And we can provide that template if they're looking for it. And then we'd like to see sidewalk connections generally from any public sidewalk to the entry of the commercial buildings. And then lastly, the certified survey map is another separate approval item. And as Charlie mentioned, we'll have to vacate Highland Drive. So I know the, the team is in the process of putting that petition together. So this CSM approval will just be conditioned on getting that accomplished. And there's kind of a statutory process for how that's done. With that, it looks like Josh is on also. I know they have some conditions on their staff report as well.
Yeah, thanks, Aaron. Our staff report kind of looked at both sites at when the, the restaurant was still kind of proposed for a restaurant and apartment. So, you know, maybe half of our comments really aren't, aren't applicable now anymore as that planning meeting was happening. I think Aaron pointed out a lot of the major things. We talked a little bit about it. The driveway opening was also a little large compared to a normal 24 per the ordinance, and you guys were going to look into that and if there was a need to be larger. Fire truck turning templates within that, that shop site. As Aaron mentioned, all the stormwater is on the shop and the New Tech site. So at the end, we'll have to kind of see how the restaurant site plays off of that and if the stormwater report, you know, they cover everything on their site as needed. There'll have to be a maintenance agreement between the two sites to share that stormwater. Along with potentially utilities, there was a sanitary sewer that was going to come up between these two and serve both. But we talked a little bit about that to try to separate it out so you wouldn't need easements or, you know, agreements between the two parcels for like sanitary and, and maintenance and things like that. So I think they can get around that piece of it by looking into it a little bit. There was also the drainage ditch to the back. There was a landscape buffer plus the existing drainage ditch that needed to be maintained on the north side. When I say the back, the north side of that property up against the residential. Other than that, we talked about lighting. There were, talked about the sidewalks and the connections to the public sidewalks. A variety of the other things are minor comments, just kind of plan comments and, and things that they can work through as part of final details.
All right, thanks, Aaron. Thanks, Josh. Now.
Can you jump back in? There was another comment.
Oh, go ahead, Aaron.
Came in after the staff report from Chief over at EMS, wondering about the potential for connecting the parking lots between the two halves. And that might be something we look at, the feasibility of that when we look at the other half of the project. You know, there's some great issues that might make that impractical. And, you know, that backside of the New Tech property might be a little bit more private as opposed to the parking lot to the west. But he did point that out as that's something that could kind of increase the, the access for emergency vehicles between the two sites. So it's something that the design team could consider as they go forward.
All right. Thanks, Aaron. With that, any questions, comments from board members?
I'm excited to see something go in this spot and drive by it often, many times a day, and, and walk by it. So I'm happy that you're finding a place to grow there.
Yeah, great. Been looking at that spot for 15 years, I think, like I said before. And I said, man, it'd be nice to own that spot. And that was literally 15 years ago, so I'm glad that I ended up with it.
I'm going to echo Heidi's comment. I lived over there for a couple of years, so I'm excited to see it developed. But definitely, I know staff has mentioned that northern landscaping, like just be very, like I know a lot of young families live over there. And I'm excited not to like run past and have deer come at me. I always seem to run into the deer that just sleep there. But I'm excited.
Wanted to leave time for, were you going to ask a question or? Okay. I'd make a motion to approve the request from Dave Henziak for approval of an application to rezone the following parcels from planned unit development to planned business, lots 1 through 10 of Highland Village subdivision with staff conditions.
Second.
We have a motion second then. Any other discussion?
David, I just wanted to add, I'm, I'm really glad it's you that's buying this property.
I appreciate that.
You've, you've been a longtime business owner in the, in the village, and it's, it's nice to see somebody from the village investing back into the village. So thank you.
I look forward to it. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next then, we have a site plan application.
I'll make, I'll move to approve the request from Dave Henziak for approval of a site plan application for the following parcels, lots 1 through 10 of the Highland Village subdivision as presented.
Second.
Any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next then, we have the certified survey map.
I'll make the motion from the request from Dave Henziak for approval of certified, certified survey map to combine the following parcels into three parcels, lot 1 through 10 of the Highland Village subdivision.
I think it's actually two parcels instead of three.
Oh, sorry, yeah, sorry.
The agenda says, yeah, the agenda says three, but.
It is two.
Two parcels, lots 1 through 10 of Highland.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second then to separate that into two parcels. Any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Next then, again, busy night in the plan commission. We discussed and considered GB real estate investments for a site plan application for almost a 10,000 square foot retail building located just across the street from here, believe it or not, right next to Wisconsin Bank and Trust on East Cottage Road. I don't think the applicant's here, Aaron, so do you want to give us the flyover?
Sure, yeah. The applicant, Garrett Bader, sent his apologies. He's got projects going in different places and just happened to have meetings at the same time on the same night here. But this did go fairly smoothly over at the plan commission, so I, I think we could move forward. If there are questions that we need him to answer and he's not here, he was understanding that this could get tabled. But again, I think it's a fairly straightforward project that we could probably try and tackle with, without him. So this would be about a 9,900 square foot retail building, Dollar Tree retailer. This is on the one acre parcel, currently owned by Wisconsin Bank and Trust. They would be splitting that off and selling to the developer for this building. The Dollar Tree stores typically operate from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM daily. They usually employ about nine, 10 to 15 people at each store. They would be sharing the driveway access from Wisconsin Bank and Trust, the existing driveway that goes through to their drive-through. The developers were really great about working on their elevations. We went through a few different iterations. It kind of started out as a metal building and it's gotten to the point that JJ has up on the screen here where I think it's a very nice building that meets the requirements of the comp plan, and I think will fit in very well with the surrounding architecture at the bank and over at Authentix. So we would recommend approval of the site plan. There are a few conditions we'd like to add on to the approval. The first one, there's a couple of different dumpster enclosure details in the submittal. One, that was a kind of a cedar material, or one that used CMU. And if they do the CMU, the concrete mason or units, we just want to make sure they're using the same ones that are on the building so it all matches. Second one, just to note that the site plan that was in the architectural drawings didn't match the engineering drawings. I think it was in earlier drawings. So just noting that it's the ones in the civil set that are the applicable layout. Similar to the last project, there would be a buffer yard required along the residential boundaries with Authentix, also on the north and east sides. boundaries with Authentix also on the north and uh east sides. Again, we'd want to see a Knox box for emergency access to the building. Uh, and similar to the last one, again, we want to make sure the fire equipment can be accommodated in the layout of the driveway and parking lot. Right now, they're showing the driveway as 30 feet wide. In the ordinance, we usually limit that to 24 feet. We have made exceptions when it's necessary for emergency access, so that'll bear itself out when they do the turn radii. And if it is necessary to go over the 24, we'd be okay with that. Otherwise, we'd like it reduced to the um 24. That's pointed out in the ordinance. Seventh condition was specifically noting that the shared driveway is approved. That is something that had to be specifically approved by the Plan Commission, which they did as, as one of these conditions. We'll want to see the lighting cut sheets, uh, lighting plan, photometric plan for staff review. Then there was a request from the applicant that they would be able to add a sign panel onto the monument sign over at Wisconsin Bank and Trust. And that, that sign had gone through kind of its own special approval process based on the zoning of that. So we just wanted to make sure that was noted as a specific condition. Uh, we'd have no objection to that, especially with it being kind of in lieu of having a monument sign on their own property. That was it for the planning conditions. And Josh, I think, had a few as well?
Yeah, um, some of our comments involved a little bit of the actual street frontage um on, on that lot. There's a crushed corrugated metal pipe, culvert pipe there. And there's an old driveway entrance actually for that separately from, from that bank access. And there's some stormwater aprons in there and everything else that kind of needs to be cleaned up a little bit. They, they didn't really address it. They were going to leave it as is. So the sidewalk along that section and some of the stormwater improvements along that section will need to be revised so it looks clean and it, and it's done and it functions well after it's developed. As far as the shared driveway goes, they're, they're buddying up against that piece of it. So it's going to have a seam in there, but they're, they're showing like eight inches of asphalt, very heavy truck kind of access, access asphalt. The other parking lot probably has three to four. So we are kind of asking the applicants to go back to kind of the bank, talk about how this is going to function together, probably just do the whole driveway all the way over because I think everybody would, it would be a better product overall, especially with that seam that's going to be there. That's where the wa- stormwater is going to run on that seam back out to the apron. So I think they need to rethink that a little bit so they don't have ice and buildup and everything else as part of that. We talked about some of the light poles are taken off on that site and some trees also on, on that site that they probably should replace, relocate and kind of show where those are going to be. We talked about sidewalk going all the way around their building. So it's also along the other piece of that parking lot to the, to the far upper part of the screen and also sidewalk connection out to the public sidewalk as, as part of the site. Stormwater, there was a little bit of stormwater to make sure it all got captured into their basin. They were missing some of it. And also they don't have quite the coverage that they needed in that basin, so to size it correctly and show us the calculations for that. They also tried to, um, as part of their application, they just said the natural soils are silty loam, so infiltration will not work on site. They have to actually go out, dig a couple picks, actually see what, see what's on site. Some of their neighboring sites do have infiltration and, and prove that they can't, can't get that infiltration requirement because that's, that's what we would like. So that to show that it can, it is not feasible on the site and they're aware of that.
Josh, really quick.
Yep.
I do notice in your review.
Yep.
That they're claiming an exemption.
Yeah.
And maybe this is sausage making and I don't have to ask this question, but help me understand, when they say an exemption, what, they're an exemption from what exactly?
So they're exempt, they're, they're claiming the exemption to be exempt from providing the infiltration requirement per your guys' ordinance and Dane County's ordinance, DNR's ordinance.
I read that completely wrong, man. I thought it was exemption from stormwater management.
No, no. Just a piece, a piece of that stormwater management, which is infiltration. Yeah. A couple of ways you can, you can get exempt from that is you just have heavy clay soils, so you can't infiltrate. Or the groundwater is really high in your location that you can't really infiltrate into high groundwater. So they have to, they have to prove, dig a few holes and prove that they truly have this large clay cap that they can't infiltrate into a soil that would, that provide that infiltration at site. Good question, though. Had some minor comments about sanitary and water coming in and into and out of the site and the sizing of that and, and what they specifically may need. They show one inch service coming in and a six inch sewer going out. They don't kind of correlate. So maybe they need something a little bit larger coming in on the water side, depending on what their needs are on the site. Other than that, there's a lot of, you know, small detailing kind of items in here. Those were some of the larger ones. We talked about also the, the lighting of the site and, and seeing the photometrics for that. Aaron mentioned that.
Are, do you view, are you viewing that exemption request as a kind of a cost savings measure?
Um, I mean, potentially that and, and you know, the site, the site itself is starting to get a little crowded, so they don't have a lot of room left on their site. So I think part of that is trying to limit the space that would be required to provide some infiltration um on site. But I, I, I don't think they're necessarily just trying to avoid it. I think they just looked at the, the soil maps and they saw that it was all clay and they just kind of put that, that was the easy button at the time to say, hey, it's all clay. Uh, we don't think we can provide it at the site and without having to go and dig some test pits. Do I think they can still probably provide it? Yeah, I think they can probably fit something in if, if, if they work it out accordingly. And they also have a bunch of that terrace area up in the right of way that if they came back and they couldn't propose something, maybe they could get something, something in there also. Not to say we'd want it there, but I, I, you know, I, I think there's a little bit of s- space there also compared to the curb. It's pretty wide in that section. There's also, there's already some ditching up and, up in that area.
All right. Questions for staff or comments?
I have another question on that same line. This is more of a general question, but could, uh, although the soils wouldn't matter if you were using um surfacing in your parking lot, that could help infiltration.
Yeah, like a, like a porous pavement or something could help potentially, but they'd have to have an underlying soil type again that could, could promote that. So if they were, if they were lacking space, but they had the soils that worked, they could put porous pavement in or something like that that would act.
Do you work with any communities that have any requirements like that?
Um, there's, there's more and more. I would say there, there isn't hard requirements, but there's been more guidance, you know, like promoting it more than, than hard guy, than hard, you know, standards for it.
Okay, thanks.
With the shared driveway, is there going to be like an easement or a lease? I'd miss if that was said.
We, we talked about that, both in Aaron's and in ours did have some sort of a, an agreement between the two parcels.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure. Same with that signage, right, Aaron? I think there had to be some sort of an agreement maybe for, for the signage also, the shared
Other questions or comments?
I'll move approval of the request from GB Real Estate Investments for approval of a site plan application to construct approximately 9,910 square foot retail building on parcel 0711-091-9315-1 located immediately east of Wisconsin Bank and Trust on East Cottage Grove Road with staff conditions.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second then. Any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. And then finally, in Plan Commission, Aaron did a bunch of work with just kind of wrapping up some of the things from the Housing Task Force that's looking at ordinance 092023, amending various sections of chapter 325 of the village ordinance. And I'll turn it over to Aaron to provide some detail.
Thanks, Gary. Now, this, as you said, came out of the Housing Task Force, some of their zoning related recommendations. These are some of the, I guess, easier ones to tackle. So the Plan Commission kind of took those first. We've been working on them over the course of the year. And then put them all together into one um actual amendment just to be a little bit more efficient in how we do that. Uh, so the first set of these relate to lot coverage. Currently, no more than 30% of a residential lot can be covered with the building footprint. We'd like to kind of get rid of that. Basically, having that kind of requirement in the ordinance requires more land for a bigger house. As I kind of alluded to in the staff report, um, that's kind of especially burdensome on something like a ranch house. You know, one story home that might be more suitable for a senior household or a household with someone who's disabled. You know, they might want to sleep a family home with a larger footprint as opposed to, you know, a two-story home that has a smaller footprint. But uh, the way the ordinance is written now, they would need more land to go with the house that would otherwise be the same size as that two-story home. So it's adding a little bit more of a burden to people we probably don't want to be burdening. Um, when the Plan Commission looked at this, how this was handled in other Dane County communities, there were quite a few that no longer had that uh building coverage limit in their ordinance. Paved surface setback was another thing we looked at, sort of indirectly related to the last item. Basically just providing a little bit more flexibility. You know, we're getting rid of the building coverage limits, but we're not getting rid of the impervious surface limit. That's not changing. Uh, so basically as a building grows, someone could conceivably have less other hardscape to work with, driveway or patios or whatever. Uh, this would just give them a little bit more flexibility in how they allocate that space and where they do it on the site. Basically differentiating between a walkway and a driveway is the main difference here. And finally, we also looked at parking requirements. Uh, the Plan Commission looked at requirements both for residential and commercial. The commercial is something we may come back with um at another time, but the focus here was kind of on the residential uses. Uh, parking is expensive, especially if it's underground or indoor. So having more parking required than is really necessary is another thing that really adds quite a bit of cost to a project. And you know, it's a cost that gets passed on to the eventual tenant or, or property owner. So we again, looked at um the standards in other municipalities and kind of um reduced some of our requirements where the Plan Commission thought they made sense to help with that um potential cost. So then the rest of the report gives you the exact pieces of ordinance text that are changing. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Aaron, am I reading this right? That the current guardrails of, let's say, 30 and 10% are bas- basically eliminated and there are now no guardrails? I, I don't see any ch- any, did, did it go to 40 or? And if.
No, we're getting rid of the building coverage limit. There is still an impervious surface limit that's not changing at all. That's 50%. Uh, so 50% of the lot can be building or driveway or patio. That's staying the same. It's the building, the building limit that's going away. And that's.
So the maximum.
Something that's kind of happening in other municipalities as well.
So if I understand correctly, the maximum with patios, building, et cetera, is 50%? It can't be more than 50% one, in any. In any way, right? Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from Plan, from board?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 09-2023, amending various sections of chapter 325 of the village ordinance as presented.
Second. All right, we have a motion and second then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right. Uh, moving then to any, any other questions regarding Plan Commission? I'm trying to think, there wasn't anything else. It was all discuss and consider, I believe. Yeah. So that was the heart of the meeting. With that then, we'll move to the Police, Police Commission. Chief, updates?
Evening. So Police Commission met on both November 9th and the 15th. Uh, November 9th, uh, we met at 5:30 PM. Uh, they reviewed the minutes from the October 18th meeting. There was minor corrections made to that and then approved, uh, then proceeded into closed session to discuss a, a certified hiring list, uh, conducting interviews and establishing questions for the sergeant's process. Out of that November 9th meeting, uh, the commission provided a certified list of uh three applicants that we are currently backgrounding. And the meeting was adjourned. On the 15th, we met at 4:30 PM. And they conducted interviews for sergeant's position, uh, three positions within the agency. Upon the completion of the interview process, they certified a list of four applicants for three positions. And we're moving forward with that process and end of meeting.
All right. Any questions for Chief? All right, thanks, Chief. Uh, next then, we have the Deer Grove EMS Commissioner, bless you. Um, we, I'll take a swing on this and Brittany can jump in. Um, we met on November 16th. Uh, the usual items covered, which the financials, the budget, bills approved, write-offs at the key, we didn't have any write-offs, aging accounts. Chief provided his staff report, walked through all those details. Lots going on with the EMS members out in the community. Then had a discussion about um some potential edits to the intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement. There, as we've been discussing as board, were a number of points that we brought up for the commission to consider, uh, and that's the process in which we're doing that. We spent a bit of time on the McGrath Funding Formula. Majority of the commission members were fine with it and did have a, a bit of discussion with one member just in regards to that. We will continue those discussions at our next meeting in December. Just provide an update with the Deer Grove EMS 2024 budgets. Obviously hasn't formally been approved here, but we've moved it along um within our overall budget, you know, with the approval coming planned in December. Uh, other communities have already approved it. Uh, just had a approval of, again, going with Johnson Block for the auditor, uh, for the auditor for the district. And discussed being an advanced life support program again, intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement that obviously have to come to at some point this board as soon to approve. And that was it. Brittany, anything else? Chief slipped out. Any questions?
Chief tried to attend a different meeting.
Oh, there he is.
Yeah. Um, I'd, I'd say the only thing to add would be the lengthy discussion we had about our challenges with uh filling the full-time positions that were identified and funded in the 2024 budget. Uh, we had, we kind of thought we had built immunity to ourselves for those posi- positions uh and had insulation with uh our own staff that other, other departments and other agencies didn't have. Uh, as it turns out, uh, we didn't have as much protection with our own internal staff as we thought. So the, the filling of full-time positions for us has become as challenging as it has for everyone else. And as part of the perspective in the county, in our county alone, Dane County, um, there have been roughly 25 full-time positions hired, uh, and added to in departments throughout the county. Sun Prairie doing 14, Wanakee doing seven, and McFarland adding uh at least four. But we thought we had 10 internal staff members that would fill our own two positions and as that turns out not to be the case. So long story short, we're working through different ways to combat the shortage of full-time staff and will bring suggestions forth, not only to the commission, but to the other municipal boards.
All right. Thank you, Chief. And Chief also indicated that the numbers of available qualified staff are going down as people retire and such too as well. So um it's, I think, a story that just continues on whether it's that profession or other professions within um the workforce. So. So I think Chief was gonna engage INGA and our staff too as well for other connections, so he may have already reached out. Thanks, Chief. Anything else I missed?
Oh, as always, fantastic job summarizing our meeting.
All right. It almost feels like I was there. With that, we'll move on then to reports from village officers. Rick, anything?
Nothing to report.
All right. I have a police commission spot that's open, and we had someone very qualified who's in here raise their hand, Shannon raised her hand, so any questions, comments, otherwise it's discuss and consider.
I'll move approval of the nomination of Shannon Parrotco to Police Commission.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion second then. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Cameron? Fun topic.
So as you guys know, throughout the month of November and October, bits and pieces of the overall tax piece comes to light. You know, unfortunately, we knew a big increase was coming this year with the referendum. Unfortunately, I think even I underestimated how significant that was gonna be. So on the average home of a Monona Grove resident with $315,000 assessment, I'm averaging the increase being $1,013.23. That same property in the Sun Prairie School District, $625.79. You know, I think a couple of things that I just wanna point out when you're looking at the percentage increase, so not only is the school district the largest piece of your tax bill, it also increased by the largest percentage at 20.6%. Dane County had an increase this year at 16.67%. I thought our 6.06% was on the higher side, but we ended up coming second lowest, and then the Technical College coming in at 5.52%. Good news, there's a couple of credits that get associated to each tax bill, the first being, while it's called the school tax credit, it really doesn't have much to do with the actual school district, but that went up as well as the lottery and gaming credit, as well as the first dollar credit. When we look at, kind of take a look at this as a different picture, this shows, you know, while the taxes are increasing overall on a $315,000 house by 14.99%, of which 70% of the tax bill or $712.71 are specific to the school district, followed second by Dane County, third, the village, and fourth, the Madison Tech College. I'm more than happy to open this up to questions, but I really wish I had better news to share
Any questions from board members? I think you put everybody in shock.
You guys are all having the same exact reaction I had when I finally had all the information to put together. You know, my heart goes out to all our residents that are on a fixed income. It's gonna be a challenging year for staff collecting taxes as well as those who are paying, so just be ready, both from communication, from residents. I'm hoping what I can cover a little bit more, what Matt and I are working on is kinda the second section, you know, we take a look at the overall, you know, what does every dollar essentially get you? So 53.1 cents of every dollar that you pay in your taxes really goes to the school district, $3.03 to the tech, $15.02 go to the county, and 28.4. What Matt and I are gonna work on is breaking out, you know, while your tax, 28.4% of your tax bill goes to the village, and we offer all of these services, we're gonna try to do a good job of explaining on each category what these subcategories have. Example, public safety, you know, that's where we support our police, fire, EMS, public works, plowing services, maintenance, et cetera, and just do a good job of just representing all the services that Village does at a very cost-effective rate. Matt, I don't know if you had anything else to share. Aaron?
Well, I think you covered it well, Cameron. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was actually expecting it to be a little higher with the school referendum, but, so I'm glad it's not as high as I expected.
Yep. So those, again, it's legally required for tax bills to be mailed out by December 18th. I expect our tax bills to be dropped in the mail sometime by December 8th approximately.
All right. Thanks, Cameron. With that then, can move to communication, most of business, and there we have first up consideration for the approval of vouchers.
Make a motion to approve the bills as written.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion second then, to approve the vouchers. Any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Correspondence? The board did get lengthy email in favor of libraries, I think Lisa sent that out to everybody, so that was the only thing I was aware of. Good information. So then, next then, we have upcoming community events. We're all gonna jump into.
I was saying, like, Christmas in the Grove is coming up.
Yes. Hopefully everybody has an enjoyable Thanksgiving with friends or family or all the above, but with that, yes, following right after that, we have Christmas in the Grove, December 1st and 2nd.
Oh, I think in Dublin Park on Thursday is their turkey run, benefiting the food pantry.
Yep. In preparation for the big feast. So yeah, over at Dublin Park. It is a fun event, and a lot of people do attend. You can bring your dogs and walk them, you can bring your running shoes and run, and it's all about a bunch of fun. And its sports are, again, our local food pantry, so thank you for that, Brittany. Lots going on, again, that first weekend in December for the Grove, so it's, you know, always an exciting time to get in the holiday spirit. With that then, future agenda items? Matt, Cameron, Lisa, anybody?
The only item I have is the public hearing as planned on December 4th for the budget.
Anything else, Matt?
No, but the second meeting in December, if you wanna preview, it's gonna be a long one, but I don't have anything off the top of my head in addition to the budget public hearing.
All right.
For the next.
All right, thank you then. All right, with that then, we will, I'll make a motion and we'll start these off. We've got several, four or five here, closed sessions. I'll start us off, and Lisa will keep us on us. I'd like to make a motion then for the village board to go into closed session regarding negotiation positions of our insurance carrier contract. The Village Cottage Grove Board will enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parentheses 1, parentheses E, deliberating negotiating the purchaseings of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion second then, and this is a roll call.
Bowig.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Stoa.
Yes.
Valencia.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
And Whittig.
Aye.
All right. Next then, I'll make another motion to go in closed session. This is closed session regarding the potential litigation concerning the agreement on the sale and restoration of the former Gaston School Building. The Village Cottage Grove Board will enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parentheses 1, parentheses G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body in rendering oral or written advice concerning a strategy to adopt by the body with respect to litigation in which it is likely to become involved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion second then, again, this is a roll call.
Whittig.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Valencia.
Aye.
Stoa.
Yes.
Peterson.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Bowig.
Aye.
All right. Next then, I'll make a motion to go in closed session regarding establishing a negotiating position for the development incentives in Tit Number Eight. The Village of Cottage Grove Board will enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parentheses 1, parentheses E, deliberating negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business wherever competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion second then, this again is a roll call.
Stoa.
Yes.
Valencia.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Whittig.
Aye.
Bowig.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Next again, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session regarding the village administrator's performance review process. The Village of Cottage Grove Board will enter closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parentheses 1, parentheses C, considering the employment promotion compensation from its evaluation data and any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction and exercise responsibilities. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Peterson.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Bowig.
Aye.
Stoa.
Yes.
Valencia.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
And Whittig.
Aye.
We are in closed session, session, session. All right, we reconvene back into open session, no items for consideration from closed session. Item 17.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion second, non-debatable, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.